I think I dumped the last load in there. Tuesday was the last day.
Last week?
Last week, yeah.
That was on Wednesday, wasn't it? Tuesday was fourth of July.
Oh, yeah, it was Wednesday. No, no.
That was the last one that day?
I I don't know, we were, I got it, we got a call right after I dumped and said, guys, it. So I don't know.
As I'm surprised you were there, you able to dump.
Well, they could do it either.
Seven o'clock, I can call a meeting to order. First thing is a vigilance. Legions and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, who will the minutes for May and June and special meetings? Questions on those minutes at all?
I was wondering if we should have a little bit of a discussion on the penalties that we got. Know what? On the penalties that we got, I know that. You're appealing and all that, but. I just.
I have that down there, yeah.
It's up in the top there, you know.
Um, I put it under. Maybe when John talk.
That would too.
Somewhere there.
Just some.
Um, who will the minutes send for May and June and the special meetings? Any any questions on them? Anything changes? Directions? If not, somebody make a motion to adjourn. Somebody do it. Uh, motion. Got made a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carried. Prove all the bills. Questions on the bills? Got quite a few of them here.
Lot of money this month too, mainly because of the. Forty two dollars.
Yeah. Any questions on the bills there? I guess the rest of it here is just. Business as normal. Uh, we've got a few repairs there from Jabins, but I see they've been putting stainless steel pipes in over there, which, you know. It's gonna be a little more cost upfront, but they're done.
And she called last week, the first, there's two checks in there for them. She, uh, first thing. One, and that was just the materials. She didn't include the labor and. Like I said, there's two checks for Jabins and I got the other one today.
All right, with that being said, somebody wanna make motion to approve the bills?
Who?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Sheriff's Department, we have fifty two hours, multiple ambulance assist, welfare check, criminal damage to property. Property lost and found. Any questions on that? Not will move over to fire department. Had nine calls, one mutual aid, three lift assists by medical. The blood drive is Tuesday, July eighteenth from noon to five. Anybody got anything to add to that report? And then we're down to. Streets race.
Um, so I got. Some quotes for the window of your place, just waiting on what you guys just uh, choose to go with. One of them is from Lucina siding window. Uh, he said that they're about fourteen weeks out, um. When that's for nineteen hundred and seventy seven dollars. And others from Belter and there's they're about ten weeks out, that's nineteen hundred and eighty four dollars. And then the third is from PM window, um. And that's for these four weeks out, where he said that once he gets the window, he can pretty much get it in right away. And that was for sixteen sixty eight.
Who is that P and M?
Uh, he's P M M or.
Yeah, man.
PM windows, um, I guess he used to work for Lucina and Belter and then he went off on his own. He mainly does. Residential stuff, so this is outside of what you'd normally do. He came by and took a look at it and said that he could do it, so.
How about, uh, have you, uh? Rung up some hours and some other costs down?
Everything that, um. I have everything up for for both the concession stand and the graffiti. Um, I'm just waiting on the what we're gonna be charging for labor and the window. And then after that, I'll have, I have it all written down for. Everything for both, so.
You remember what we had for labor rate or? Don't wanna say. It's in our city ordinance thing there.
Yeah, I wanted to say fifty, but I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm, I was thinking that earlier too, but I I'm not sure.
Remember?
Yeah.
I don't actually, we'll have to look that up.
Yeah, that it's in the code or?
Yeah.
It's in there when we clean up properties or mow properties, but have we got just a labor charge? Without equipment?
Think we do.
We do?
I think so.
I was trying to find it, it. The best, the closest I could find was it said that it would be determined by council, but I never found a.
A number.
I never found a number.
So when you get a grand total there, who's gonna? Pay the bill?
I guess that would be up to the, for sure for the graffiti. Um, the deputy said that that's now a civil matter, so. That's, I guess, up to you guys on whether you're gonna choose to go after them. That was. Depending on what. Labor is, will probably be, if you did labor at a hundred dollars an hour, um. And the stuff they damaged would be both. Uh, six fifty one. Or. What it would be, what cost to them for the concession stand, obviously that one. I had two hours into that. So that would be. Depending on the window, it would be anywhere from. Almost twenty four hundred dollars to eighteen hundred dollars. And then for the concession stand, I I texted the deputy. I think he probably doesn't get back on until Wednesday again. Um, last I talked to him, he had not been able to get a hold of the. Uh, the kid that was from Mankato. So as of right now, he's only gotten a hold of the. Um, the one kid. It might as well.
So is there any? If you get a hold of the kid from Mankato, is there any way that we know whether they're ever gonna pay the bill?
I have no idea. I don't, I don't know how you'd enforce it.
Wow.
Probably probably legal action.
You know, I didn't think of it before, but we could ask Kennedy if we sent out an invoice, then what our options are after. I wouldn't.
Uh, I think we should.
Yeah, I would have to say that our options would get costly if we try to pursue after they don't pay, but. You know, if we just send a draft up an invoice and. You know.
Yep.
Parts. Parts of labor basically is what it's gonna be.
Well, I mean. You can't have people destroying cities property without pursuing some kind of.
Right, right.
Pretty artists were ten and eleven years old too, so.
And I think the other kids are fourteen. So I don't know if. The deputy saying that under fourteen is incapable of committing a crime, so I don't know if that's. Fourteen and under, or if, once you turn fourteen, that that. Is your, that's when you can start being. I'm not sure.
I think it can go on to the parents though.
Right.
Yeah. I think I'm not a legal person.
Um, for the graffiti, you really made it sound like, um. That even all they did was criminal, that it, they can't do anything further at that point. The window, I don't know.
Well.
I mean, you can send an invoice to all of them that are involved, right? Whether they paid or not, did you? For the graffiti too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, 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 nothing wrong with that.
I mean, you can't have people destroying stuff and there's no consequence.
We don't act on it and people aren't really gonna know that much. I mean, we gotta act on it. There's no getting around it, so.
I agree.
The word might get out that, hey, we can't do that. Or the parents might tell the kids, we gotta behave ourselves. So I read, uh. That the entire city of Rochester closed every park. For this reason, they just shut them off.
They did?
Yep, closed them up.
Really?
Because of vandalism?
Yep. Wow, let's do that.
I mean, I caught the kids that did the graffiti and I cleaned off. So they, there, someone had done something around the time that the window had broke in the. Men's room up here. I cleaned that off and after I caught those kids, I just, when I stopped by on. The, is it Friday that I showed you the, maybe, when I went back in there on Friday, it was.
Yeah.
On a, um, paper towel there. It's new.
Back again.
Yeah. Different style and I don't know if it was those kids, supposedly the kids that did all the graffiti left, I don't know. Um, and I don't. It was in there, it was done with the same paint pen, but it wasn't. Identical to what they had done.
Right.
Everywhere else. I have no idea.
Right.
I don't know if it's worth investing in. Like those cellular trail cams or something that you can. Track their location, so if the kid finds them and tries to take it, you can follow them back to it, or they send pictures to your phone of. Once they've got something, I don't know if it's worth. In the areas that aren't covered by. We only have cameras covering the building down there, you know, outside of that, everything else is in the dark. And then the shed that the, um. The pheasant guys use, uh, that siding is all beat up in the little shelter area and the. They pulled the outlet, I turned off, I turned off the breaker in there, but they pulled the outlet out of the wall. Through the siding, that's all broken and. So.
Would it be beneficial to put some more cameras up there? I mean, can you do them trail cameras that? Just record or can you get them to? You have to have internet down there to send them, right?
Well, the the trail cams, they're cellular, so it's probably through some sort of phone service. I'm not sure. How exactly that works, but I'm sure it's, there's some sort of phone service that. That's where it gets its connection from.
Or have. The problem child's children left home.
But it's not gonna happen again with.
Two different, completely different individuals that did the concession stand in the. The graffiti.
Yep. Well.
I don't know, I don't know if it's.
We're fortunate we had cameras down there. You know, at least we caught them with the higher dollar value. Damage. I mean, yeah, I've been that parked there in that little shelter. There's kids up there at night. They should be home.
Right.
Again. There is a curfew. But don't seem like the parents follow.
Yeah.
That anymore.
One thing. I would like to ask. Chris. Is can we discuss the address of the parents? I don't wanna give the kids names and all that kinda stuff. Can we say the address? I would like to know that, cuz now we can, we know we can say the address of problem. Um. Properties and all of that, you know, I don't know if that's. You know. So we've always been so careful before, really always told it. That's not the way it's supposed to be, but we found out we can't.
Good. In terms of the windows, you have a. Is there a preference on doors, moister? Out there?
And 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 all fair, and Race asked me if, you know, if he should just go get it fixed, you know, have them fixed, cuz they're broke. They should be fixed, you know. My way to the council and that was like Thursday, maybe or Wednesday when you called me and I said, well, as long as it's so close, just wait. But how do you feel about that in a situation like this? Sure, I mean, he's, he's got a budget, he should be able to just, shouldn't he fix it back up again? Fix things back up, you know, I just wanna.
Time to hear that, so you know.
Right, that's kinda what I'm saying, thinking about where the cutoff is on something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you gotta replace a wall, it'd be different, you know what I mean, but, you know. If it's a matter of just putting a toilet in or a window or, you know, things like that, I, I think you should just do it. Yeah, okay, so we kinda have, we already got some direction there now.
Take care of it.
But I'm glad we're talking about this so that we all know what's going on down there, you know.
Like that outlet, were you able to put that back in place or have to have some more?
I just put a.
The siding's almost done again.
Yeah, but I'd forget the, I just cover it.
Put a blank cover over?
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
Yep, I like I said, I need the breaker off there.
I don't really see pick, you know, people down there picnicking as far as that goes, or they have a.
Just screw it.
Or electricity, so. And if we get complaints, we'll put it back in. No, no big deal.
Has they done any more damage to that pheasant's building at all, like the windows or the doors or any?
No, everything on that seems fine. It's just the, like I said, the siding on the, um, where all the picnic tables, that's really.
Are they treating the picnic tables, you know?
Um, I haven't noticed anything.
I mean, they've been gouging on them and writing on some of these other ones. Taking a lighter and melting them and a little bit of everything, you know. I think they were eight hundred and fifty bucks a piece, I believe, something like that when we got them, you know, we got good quality ones and. Hate to see them damaged, you know, they got u- utilized yesterday in that part. So.
Yeah. Unfortunate.
Yep. It'll never get any better because, you know. Can't penalize anybody. Like Rochester, obviously they got sick of it.
Yeah, I just, I read that, you know, I thought, hmm, good for them. I don't infer along or anything like that, but they just basically said, that's the end of it, we're done.
Anything else? Yeah, you might as well get that one guy there to. If you can get that window fixed right away. I mean, the boards are still on them, right?
Yeah, by screaming back, I don't even know how they got the screws out. They did it by hand and they're the big, I mean, the screws are. That long and they're the T thirty, they're big screws. I don't even know how they got them all.
Jim probably made the boards, right?
I don't know what we're talking about.
Down to the ballpark concession stand.
Brian, I made those.
Yeah.
Did they break one of the concession stand windows?
Oh, yeah, they pulled the plywood out and smashed the window.
Those windows are made in Minnesota, they came from Vernon Center. And I installed. And that's really expensive what they're charging you to install them. Calvin can get you a replacement.
Oh, really? So maybe aluminum frame window, right?
No, they're vinyl frame.
Oh, they are?
They're sitting on stainless steel. Counter.
Oh, that's right, they go up and down.
They're just.
Yeah, they're just.
One by four trim board, round them, they're screwed in. I guess just remove that.
Yeah.
Window, put back in. Now we're exercise.
Maybe get a hold of Vernon Center.
Yeah.
Who's that in Vernon Center? Calvin.
Calvin.
They'll have the model number, the part number and all that.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, that'd probably be a cheaper way to go. All right, anything else in Race?
What's on him?
Um, you got the. Recycled streets in good shape. I see we got a bill here from, or a. Proposal from these one guys, is that that good stuff then? And they talk about chips. They put sand on it that one time, didn't they?
That's, that's what he said that, um. You can't put sand on it. I forget what he said, they prefer to use, uh, cuz I guess it makes it better. Uh, makes it better to cross over the road. I can't remember what's the. But he said that they're. They can approve, but maybe you, they know. He said they need to be here in seven to ten days, and he knows.
Yeah. Um. You maybe wanna, since you probably. Talk about the generator and then bargain, have they been here, bargain?
Came around and, um. Well, he drove down all the roads and found all the cracks that he determined needed to be sealed, so that's for what he saw, um.
He didn't see any other streets that might need some, uh. Cracks doing along the gutters and the streets?
I, I don't remember. Ron, do you remember if you talked about that at all?
I mean, no, I, I don't have, I didn't really have much to do with it. Well.
Did we get them to come over here? They gave us a quote for doing a couple streets. Do we have them come over and then maybe have some more done besides? We could probably spend upwards towards, uh. What? Seventy five thousand dollars this year on the street fixing?
Yeah. We're not, you know, we ain't gonna seal coat this year, so.
Right.
Otherwise it'd be another. Dunk. I wondered about that too. I did drive around, I, I wasn't. I see the ones they're doing and some of their, you know, they're not doing, really don't have much cracking. And, uh.
Like this street here going down here and going all the way down there, they didn't find much. They said something on the south end here a little bit. But I mean, all of our streets and they only found a few, I mean. Do we put? Put some more money on that, so if they come to town and we see more?
Well, yeah, 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 I mean, it's, yep.
How much more?
I believe he said that when they come to do it, that he, Jim is the. Estimator, I believe he said that he comes and supervises everything to you, so.
Yes.
Yeah, he does come.
Not that we won't more next year too, but I mean, the worst we got, get it done, no, they know getting around that, cuz we're. Wonder what it.
They got eight thousand dollars worth here so far, and that's only a couple streets. Does it say how many? Doesn't say how many, uh. Heat they're doing. Would we up that? Fifteen seventeen thousand, so make, you know, we don't seal coat this year. We'll have that much more money with seal coating next year, which won't change that much, but I mean. Maybe spend a little bit more. On the preparation side before we, uh, seal coat them. Just my thoughts.
Could be done. They didn't have any pool or. Uh, down hall street. It might be here too, I, 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 you know.
All that now is, will that hold up till we seal coat next year?
Oh, yeah, well, it's always good. I say there would probably be more cracks next year again to do, you know, so, but yeah, if you get them cracked, cracked sealed anyway. You don't want that moisture getting in there at the winter. That's what wrecks more stuff. So you keep that out, that's the big thing. Yep.
This dust.
Just like the county, you know, they. Back seal every year. On every road. That's why you see the toilet paper out there, that's what they did. No. That's when it's moisture out.
This guy was in town too, that death slot guy?
No, I just sent him, um, the measurements, the. How long the blocks are and how many blocks and the widths of the roads for the blocks.
Oh, okay. So you've got like all of Chapel.
Yep.
All of Willard, all of, uh. Aladega and South. And anyplace else where there was recycled, that's the only main ones, right?
Yep.
Yep. So do we need a motion then to approve this ninety six oh nine for the death block? To seal coat. The recycled blacktop streets. Further discussion? Do we throw this one in on the same motion? Do we? They got a price of eight thousand, but they only got a few streets. Do we put that a little higher in case they come to town, uh, got more to get done? Or do we wanna see what kinda job they do first?
At that price, you know?
Yeah.
You know, per foot.
Yeah. I don't think they even gave a price per foot, did they?
No, so. I mean, I guess I don't wanna give them the, uh. Free hand or.
Sure, right, just not to go ahead, you're gonna have to, yeah, basically, you know. This is on their cover letter, what they do. So somebody wanna make motion then for the ninety six oh nine, ninety six and the eight thousand that we have here? Front of us and get this done. Go Lou, come in second.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I oppose, motion carried.
You wanna talk a little about the generator, Race, did you meet with them? I didn't, couldn't get there that day when I thought I would.
Scott and Ron both were there. I think Ron might have showed up toward the end, but Scott was there the whole time and. They just kinda. They figured out, or we talked a little bit about where to put it, um. They're like closer we are to it, the more fill we're probably gonna have to add around it farther. And the more wiring, so you, you can put it. He said you can put it anywhere, just a matter of how much you wanna spend on.
The wire and the.
On the wire.
Diameter, cuz the farther you go, bigger diameter, and then the cost will keep going on.
But don't they go on that southwest pole where it's coming into the property and you have your disconnect switch just like any other place and it? It hooks up there on the way we go? Cuz you already got the wires ran to the north, you got the wires ran to the whole thing. The generator should be supplying the same amount as the power line, right? It has to, or you wreck stuff. Cuz it comes in on that southwest corner. Of the lagoon.
Then it goes east.
Goes all the way to that, that big panel way in the, would it be?
Yeah, the north.
North.
And northwest corner.
But it's underground already. Right? From the southwest corner of the lagoon here, it goes east over there to that other. Uh, lift station, and then it goes north down here to the big control panel and all the pumps. It's already underground. So don't they just put a big disconnect panel in there and just like any, like right over there?
Well, normally them disconnects are fairly close to where. In by the, the building or all there, obviously in a building, but. In by the paneling.
Yeah. And I guess we wouldn't have to supply the east one because that's only when you transfer, right?
Right.
So, and maybe. Do they have a problem putting it on the north end down there by the panels?
We just have to. Add fill and probably put a concrete pad for it, it'd be, it'd be like an amount of fill going in.
Yeah, we were, uh, we were, I was down there with him today and we got to talk to Brian as far as, maybe we could put it out you in on the. North side of the panels.
I, I talked to him, he said, he said that's pretty filled up with pipes.
Okay, that's what we need to know if what was underneath.
He probably wanted almost on the south side of the panel.
Well, that's, that's where they plan on doing it.
Yeah, I, I have a.
Down there, it'd be, wouldn't have to put as much fill down on the, on the north.
I, I painted a bunch just to kinda get an idea of where.
Then they discussed too. We'd have to put an LP tank down there. Would, uh, natural gas run down there or not?
No, light isn't there.
Uh.
There isn't, no, no.
No, but would they?
I imagine for money, you know, but yeah, I mean, that would sure be the way to do it.
Yeah.
Do you recommend what liquid?
Yeah, cuz he thought that the gas wouldn't be, when it gets cold, it probably wouldn't be enough, um, pressure or something to.
If, if the winter, the generator power run off for a long period of time. The LP wouldn't.
Yeah, that would animize enough.
Right.
Um, that dico may made all out of clay. Well, we got a couple piles of clay there, you know, we got plenty of stuff to make a pad. You know, for it down there. More than enough material. Do we, we would sure wanna get another quote, right?
Yeah, 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 sure.
That one too is forty weeks out, so.
Pardon?
That's, that generator is forty weeks out, so it'd be looking at.
Our next spring.
A.
Oh, really? Wow. Is this still something that we should do or keep pursuing for a while or?
I think so. Yeah, I do think that we should get a home to the gas company and just see what it would cost and give them an est, give us an estimate.
Yeah.
You know.
And all those like cash and run on ten?
I have no, I don't remember. I don't, I don't think so, to tell you truth, but.
I don't think so, because it comes in on that end of town, it's all fed from there. And I don't think there's, yeah, there's nothing down.
It goes up. You would think it would go up sixty six.
Yeah, probably.
That, yeah, maybe they could shoot it across there somewhere or some. Down the ditch, I don't know. I have no idea. It's worth it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah.
There is that generator service company that's not able to the two.
That's, that's the one.
That's this one?
Oh, okay.
That's, that's Blue Star, okay.
And then there's that one I see there, yeah. Was it like Crystal? Out there by Crystal, right?
There is, yeah.
I guess, you know, that's a fair amount of money and we should see, maybe get a couple more quotes.
Yeah, what the heck?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not something that we have to do immediately. It's something that we should have done a long time ago and never did.
Now that we've done that twice this year.
Yeah.
It kinda gives you a boost.
Yeah. Try to get it arranged and if it's spring before we can do it, it's spring. That's just the way it is, but.
Yeah. All right. Add it then, race.
Um, I believe so. I can't remember.
Did anybody know if Brian was gonna make it tonight or not?
I haven't talked to him. No, I don't know.
Yeah.
Could we move uh? Paul's got something he wants to say.
There is the water water tower. They did. They came into their inspection and all.
Oh, yeah, we got this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wanted. Wanted for their annual maintenance, they're pretty much by what two fifty a year, four hundred fifty dollars a year. And then uh. The approach of ancient. And yeah, I mean. The handrail needs to be increased to forty two inches according to standards.
He said that that was. That probably is a necessity. That's just more to if we wanted to be an oil shit compliant. Um. But he said that the overflow pipe. Should definitely be done right down there. And then all the water just falls. Right down if it's a windy day, it can definitely flow around. And then there's a ladder on the inside of there and we got one of the rods as well, though. So. That becomes like the issue there. When they come to. Especially if you're not familiar with it, added when it came out, said that. You know, we're doing this before because you remember that broken wrong, so.
They would take care of that, too, then?
Yeah, I believe so.
Make sure it's all in good shape?
Yeah.
Yeah, the other day when they're at all, you know, it didn't it came out. So, yeah, we should get that pipe hooked up. About the reason the handrails up there? Is that something you could have done or?
Well, I would say so. Just get it over with, get it done.
Somewhere along line, it'll be mandated, right?
I mean, that and somebody, somebody's gonna go up there and work someday. It won't be mad like me, but anymore, but it's. Used to go. Anymore.
Yep. All right, then we got a grand total of uh forty two thousand dollars here, right?
That's just painting.
That's just.
Oh, that's that's painting, yeah.
Yep. It's fifty four fifty eight five.
Nine thousand.
Fifty nine thousand.
There you go.
Now throw the water department in our rear row, right? Well, you gotta do it. I mean, what do you do?
Yeah, if we don't keep it up far, yeah, with the railing, too, you gotta.
That's what I mean.
Good enough.
I make a motion to approve the fifty nine thousand instead of repairs and the painting.
Got made a motion, someone a second?
Oh, second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
I have both. Motion carried. Uh, we have a draft fact sheet here permit under Brian's uh. Agenda.
Yeah, hopefully he's gonna be here tonight. Talked about it. Um, he said it's up for public comment right now. But and if anybody wants to look, it's here in the office, but that's about all I'd be able to talk about.
Every every permit's up for comment. Every every time, I mean, no matter what that storm is, every on building and everything is up for comments. It's what everything else.
But when he was sending the other days, he said this is something they need to keep on file here. But I was assuming it was here tonight, so I didn't. Fair enough.
Your people's updated if there's any more to follow, right?
Oh, yeah.
So. All right. Just make note of that. From the. Minnesota Pollution Control General. On permit. Yep. Have we heard anything? From Bolton and make about our. Inside over there at all?
I don't know.
I mean, they'd be here tonight.
That's what I thought. And then they thought they'd be smoking like. Two weeks afterwards.
Joe called me about smoke testing and said that um. They don't have. A concrete date set, but he said maybe within the next week or two or three. The small testing will be pretty soon. You just called me about that last.
And they are they only gonna do this northwest corner? Are they gonna do a couple areas that were? Or are they gonna do everything?
That I can't remember.
I think they said they were only gonna do like that northwest corner, right?
Thought there was two areas.
Yeah, or the southwest and the northwest.
Two areas.
Because I don't think down in there, we were getting too much eye on eye. Or in that way, yeah. Well, I guess. Keep in contact with them, racing, you know, be nice to get out here and get that done.
He should be letting me know probably this week or early next week when they're coming on. Um, I believe he's had the maybe two weeks from last. Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
But he said he didn't have a. Concrete date yet.
You need that comment that night here, so it stays dry and it's warm, so it comes leach out of the ground. That's all the crap, so. Hopefully they gave it for you. Lot of rain.
He said it. The guessing will probably take two days to for the small testing, too. Yeah, I wonder what they do there.
All right. Um, could we all needs to you? I have to address the council and he's got a minute to eat by return app, so.
So for those that don't, I'm in my name, Paul Barnard. My wife and I reside at five five one nine one in the grave. And um. I just wanted to let the council know and all the members of Good Thunder know. That your mayor. Came to Mankato. At ten AM. On the tenth of June, to talk to our fluid county commissioners. Now, he's well aware of what's been going on with this compost site east of town. And I just want to thank you, Robert, for coming down there, speaking on behalf of everyone. Because we were able to get that facility. Starting to close down. Now, it may go to attorneys. We're not sure where it's gonna go from here, but it was very important. That Robert and other members. Got up and spoke at that meeting to our county commissioners. Because this has been going ongoing problem for a long time. And and Robert had a good point about trying to sell a home in Good Thunder with the orders that we have coming out of that facility. But I just want everybody to be well aware of it and uh thank you, Robert, for taking the time and coming to that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
I put a couple plugs in for the new building on here, too, but I don't think that one. Watched part of the video. Yeah, you did. It was good. You did a good job.
Well.
They can't sell a thirty million plus dollar state of the art facility. We'll take it on off here. Got no problem with that.
He did good.
All right, um, we didn't, John, you didn't leave yourself a place for the. Fill in city clerk. Do you have anything at all? Or you you got it all in here for us? Tom, that's something that.
Um, no, I just stuff I was gonna touch touch on a little way and it gets to in the uh. Uh, the agenda. I guess the biggest thing is uh. But I don't have in here was. Race and I did. Read for the water meters on the third of July. It took us less than three hours. And then he went out because we had twenty one. No reads, missed read or whatever it was last. So. My priority now, the rest of the week is to um. Get those that do not read and transferred in. They are transferred. I have them in um. Get the other ones in and then. Work with Benny on how to do the actual bills, so. Um, they can go off within a week and a half or so for. Second quarter.
All right. Here. Yeah, because you have this resolution down here. Under new business, so. Tom, did you want to discuss?
I just wanted to. Wait out here that we paid. Out of our checking account this month. Two thousand twenty dollars and sixteen cents again. For late fees to the IRS. And to the state. And that um I know John is appealing. These were. Wow, I don't even know how far back they go. Some were regarding W twos that were inappropriately done. Not filed. Um, the beginning of the year. Um, so anyway, since you've come in, you've. Got a handle on all that now? And um. I I just wanted to to thank John. Especially for appealing. You know. Giving our side of the case here, you know, what we were going through. And, you know.
With the IRS, there was no option, and that was a short turnaround for you to get that one out. That was the six hundred twenty, and that was for. I have, I want to ask Greg Burkhart if he has any info on it, but it was um said uh. Incorrect or incomplete filing of the nine forty one for year end for two twenty twenty two. And then the two's. That one was the fourteen. That that has to be on, so hopefully we'll get it worked back, but.
And even if it's something, but, you know. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that that was. Something that happened last year and that. He's trying to fix it, trying to appeal it, so.
According.
Hopefully our new clerk. Will will uh. Have a handle on that at all times. I'm sure you will.
All right. Anything else then, John? You you need to bring up?
And um and and with that, always I'm talking, I just want to say how happy I am that you accepted.
Do we have that somewhere here to make a?
Yeah, there's a uh. On the second page, I think.
Oh, we got cracks in here and we kind of got miscellaneous business taken care of, right? That'd be right.
Yeah, a lot of it, yeah. Yeah, we got a lot of it done.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, here it is. All right, yeah, John, you've stepped up and got us through some tough times here. I know it hasn't been easy for you, so. Again, thank you because uh. It's it's a difficult job. It's it's just not. It's just not easy, so, you know. Be a learning.
Detail.
For everybody again.
Detail, detail, detail.
Yep. All right, I want to community comment. Anybody with anything?
Oh, I would just say on that smoke testing, which I think is a wonderful idea, that maybe you should get a date. And tell people, because I mean, like, if somebody's got a laundry sink or something in their basement that they don't use a lot. And you know, the the trap don't have water in it. Then smoke's gonna get in their house.
Yep.
So I mean, all they got, if you just tell people they can, they don't pour water into traps, then it's their own fault, but you know, they shouldn't have a warning on it, you know.
Yeah.
That that's eventually the plan. Go to I. I talked to Joe about setting a date at this meeting, and he said that he did. It's it was still too far out for them to. Know yet, but once once I know a date, then it will definitely be. Um, people will definitely be let know that what's gonna be happening.
And we should let the whole town know, because, you know, we might decide that the drop of a hat, we're gonna do that, you know, you know.
It should just be on the internet and however we can post it the best, down the post office, wherever we have our posting places, just. Make a manual one, put one in the window here. And let everybody know that a possibility of. Could do the whole town, whatever.
Better than having some old lady call the fire department because she thinks her sink's on fire.
Yeah.
Anybody else with?
Yes.
All right, howdy, folks. Uh, sorry, I was late. I was coming from Eagle Lake. Their city council meeting was running a bit long, but my name's David Wayne. I'm with Congressman Pennstead's office. Just wanted to come down here quick and introduce myself. Uh, just uh I'm the eyes and ears for the congressman on the western part of our district and. Uh, just kind of here to hear any concerns that the the city might have and uh anything that you'd like to get to DC. Uh. Uh, pass that message along.
All right, well, that's a big. Big question.
Yeah. Yep, I got a card right here.
You know.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That's me.
Any more? I just ran out, actually. You just send up the last one.
Are you sure?
You can take mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just based out of Mankato and uh handle everything from Blue River County all the way out to Rock County.
So you're you're local?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, oh, all right. Oh, he might think of something, you know, that's great.
Oh, we could think of a lot of things.
I mean, you know, there's there are things that. You can. Hurt one right now, but it doesn't do any good, so.
You know, the the state mandates a lot of things, you know, like lagoon discharges and all this stuff, you know, and. Yep, City of Mankato and City Rochester and all them. They have. Millions of dollars to do that, take care of business. Personnel to handle it. Small towns don't have that capabilities. We have a limited number of people that work for us, and we have limited dollars to work for us. So, you know. Some of that stuff that they they try to push on the people, it just. It's no, there's no common sense for the small communities.
Okay.
You know.
Um, that's probably like State Senator Dreheim. Uh, I know that I I remember it. That's this is Rich's district. Uh, I think that he'd be a great contact. Might get you that that contacted, but to uh he's kind of your voice in St. Paul to make sure that those. Those state laws are protecting you folks down here. So that's good to know, though, for sure.
Yeah.
Well, besides that, I mean, you know. We're becoming. Increasingly liberal. And it's. It's getting harder and harder. You know, and some of that's coming out of Washington. Maybe maybe a lot more than we think is coming in the direction out of Washington, you know, and. It's uh hard for. Rural America to live a lot of that.
Yeah, that's something we're very understanding of. That's Congressman right now is so focused on making sure that uh rural policy is what we're pushing in DC. Uh, that's right now, we're on a a tour of the entire district for the Farmville reauthorization that's coming up in September. Uh, we did ten counties in June. We've got uh another eight this month and then the final three uh next month. So we're making sure that. Uh, everything that's put forth by our office is focused on the rural parts of our district.
That's good.
Yeah, so.
That's good, yeah. Because that's we seem, we seem to always, every year, it seems like we get just a little bit behind her in the rural rural America here, you know.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else under public comment? If not, we'll go down to uh unfinished business. We had citywide cleanup held uh June seventeenth. Was it pretty successful, race?
I was busy in the morning, trailed off. In the last hour and a half, but at the first hour and a half, it was. Pretty much nonstop for.
Did you have any uh numbers, Tom, what a.
I had no idea.
Okay.
Never even I never even thought about asking, to be honest with you.
Not the clothes they take out just for two, because they managed to get.
Oh, really?
Those two, yeah, they're they're both full by the end, but. The the big one maybe had a little bit more space, but the smaller truck was completely full.
It just isn't as successful when it's got to be totaled down there versus on the curb. But it's a little more manageable that way, isn't it? Or isn't it? How does it work? What do you think, Tom?
I think it's more manageable down there because you can kind of watch, you know, a little easier when it goes in, you know, but when it's on the curb, what do you do? You're going right by it, you know? I mean, it's just like. Hey, you know, leave that so it sits there for another two weeks. You know, you just put it in.
Yep.
You know, that's that's the problem there.
Is there ever?
Is there ever an issue with people not being able to get stuff to there? Like not having trucks or trailers or, you know, things like that or not, an elderly person that doesn't have the ability to bring something, even to haul it there?
We we, in the past, they said that if they should call city hall if they can't find a way to get their rubbish in there. I don't know if we've ever had anyone actually take up on it, I know you've called a little bit in the past, many, many years ago.
But that is something that they could do is they can call.
Yeah.
If they need help or something or or whatever, okay.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be able to get everybody to do it anyway, they're either gonna do it or not.
Right.
But.
And you know, the thing of that is, if you start doing that, then everybody, oh, let's just call the city. And also, how do you make that fine line that, you know, yeah, maybe the, not the the seniors. Doesn't quite have the capabilities of hauling it down there that.
Right.
I see them guys got. So, yeah, it's something a guy can make notice, you know, next year.
Nothing else you could do on one-on-one basis. Yeah, it is really.
Yeah. Okay, then uh, under finished business, uh, city clerk vacancy, the city had four applicants, one dropped out. And the city interviewed three candidates on June twenty second and motion was approved to hire Sue Petty. As the new city clerk treasurer.
No, we need, we need a motion to approve.
We need a motion, yeah. Um, somebody want to make that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Someone to second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carried. Thank you and welcome. Um, and you will be coming when, was it twenty fifth?
The Tuesday.
Okay.
The twenty fifth.
Good, yeah, all right.
I have it on my calendar.
I want to say that we had three good interviews.
Absolutely.
Really good interviews, so. Very qualified people.
I talked to individual from Vernon, they're in the same process, they have three too, but. Maybe not as good. I don't, it didn't sound like it, but yeah, it was a very difficult choice, it was, because they were very, very good. So. Welcome anyway, we'll see on the twenty fifth. And petition to vacate Kennedy's response. To the vacating them portion of Willard Street. Two letters here, right?
Yeah, there's two, he sent one once, I talked to him on the phone and then. He's got another one after he got. Had the same thing, but basically what I can take from it is, it's not a a complete petition yet because. Of the adjoining or abutting properties to what would be what the west in that alleyway.
Yeah.
And then um. You know, when she was presenting to the council last month and like um. Kind of like, kind of like that, we had to take action, but it has to be within the best interest of the city, and I don't know if. We can. Real gratefully say that it's in the best interest of the city right offhand, so.
Right.
I don't think we should do it, neither, I mean, it's just, once you get rid of the land, you don't get it back, and we've done that with a couple other properties and we've kept it. You know, granted, we gotta mow it, you know, or maintain it, but. It's there if you need it, you know, and it's down there, it's. Probably grounds where a guy could put a couple, three houses in there. You know, it, whatever, I mean, but it's still, it's something that you don't. Want to vacate property that the city has, it just uh, and Kennedy's more or less saying that too, because down the road, it's just not gonna get it back. You know.
Well, I don't know, she's not here tonight, I don't. Do you think we need to do some kind of response to her? To that Sheila Ream?
At this time, uh, advice of our attorney, we wouldn't want to vacate her.
No, I mean, to let her know that this time we're not gonna take any action, that's basically what I.
Well, let's say what Kennedy said, say what Kennedy said, more or less, that the attorney said. This is the way it is. Yep, and the council. Even if the Kennedy window said that, I'd have still been against it, I mean, that.
Right.
In the past, it's proven itself to keep it.
We do need to fix that part of the road, though, where the, where the water is running.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll fix it.
Well, I told Ron, when uh, they come to Blacktop, you know, it comes across the street from where David Carroll's used to live. Would you maybe take that blacktop off and put a. A little uplift there to keep it from running down on their property, because it, that isn't right.
Yeah.
And if we have to go down that street with a uh, another what? Twenty feet farther than what the blacktop is now to keep the water off from running right down, it goes right down to their house.
Yeah.
So if we have to dig out what's bad and we have to come along and then they up upswing it. Like a little blacktop curb, yeah. That's what we have to do.
Yep. So when would that be, this year yet or?
Yeah, when they.
Get that taken care of, yeah.
This year, okay, yeah. They come back there after, probably be later fall this year now or.
Yeah, as soon as that manhole gets done, they'll be on the, they'll be on the list when it comes out of that alley. Crossing the post office, that's what's holding up that project.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay, yeah, that's right, you said that. And I was gonna give Mike Drummer a call and I didn't get that far, you know, uh. I asked an individual that works for him if they've uh, got some site plans, they have it at Bolton and Mink right now. For a site plan, if they need a cutout on the east side of the property there, it'd be nice to get it done this fall, you know, before. We do anything next year, but then if you look on the west side of the property, if they use that driveway that's there. We gotta do something with that water going down that hill, we have a gully right now about a foot wide and eight inches deep, yeah. If we just bite the bullet since he's. Made a gigantic effort to salvage that school and just get somebody in to run curb and gutter down there, so it runs in.
We gotta find out what he's gonna do.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
Yeah, because it's bound to have a driveway there, I would think, I don't know.
Maybe that could be working with something that he's going to do and then utilize his services or his content, so it's.
I mean, you know, I mean, it'd be, you'd think that'd be the cheapest, easiest thing to do, you know.
But it'd be nice to get all that work done, if he's gonna do anything on the east side, so when we seal coat next year, it's done, you know. So I'll try to give him a ring and see if he has any ideas, you know, so we can get this work all done this summer, yep. Good. Okay, uh, you got something here, John, about Banyan training for new clerk? Oh, we got a resolution to do first.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution uh, number twenty twenty-three dash O one, City of Good Thunder. To accept ten thousand dollar donation from the fire station repairs from the Good Thunder Fire Department Relief Association. Somebody want to make a motion to? For that to.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye, most motion carried, thank you.
This is the one you should.
Yeah, he's got the original there, Tom.
Okay. And then tax open.
We got paid.
Yes, we did.
All right.
Gave gave a big boost to the old checking account, we were getting down into below seven hundreds now, we're. Over ninety. And I'm assuming that second one comes out in October?
Yeah, well, it would, you know, it wouldn't, it'd come out in uh.
December, isn't it?
December, probably.
Yeah, I think it's December and we get.
Month or two lag there, yeah.
Speaking of that. Nancy Etherington. Got me and she said, you know, you maybe should think about investing some of the money that's in your checking account.
That's right.
You're carrying an awful lot of money in your checking account.
Yeah, we do.
And right now, the CDs are pretty terrible. And, you know, she says.
Five percent.
Over, yeah, over five percent, yeah, you know, in a short term.
Uh.
I think we should give John authorization to, I don't know how much to start with, and it's kind of. Maybe in your ballpark, we want to do a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or.
Break it up in a couple?
Yeah.
What do you, what is short term, what do they qualify as short term, six months or a year?
I have nine months or something like that. Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Any particular bank you want to? Do we want to do business with? CDs out of US Bank, or do we want to go with somebody local like in Vernon Community Bank or?
You you can call. Whoever you want to call and get, see what their rates are, and uh, if you say City of Good Thunder, I went through this. When I was on the party department and stuff and you'd call around, but. We had a local bank then too, but we didn't get it there necessarily, we went. Cause we got like another percent and a half or something like that, more than what it was given.
Yeah.
So you gotta check all a little bit and.
Most of them are minimum with twenty-five thousand.
Right.
And all the men stare on us.
You know, for a term now, we're kind of talking about pushing some of this work back this year and all that, it might be a good opportunity to make some money on it. Five grand, you know, pretty easy, pretty quick, you know, compared to what we've been done in the past, you know, so.
And then that money that we do have invested, I mean, is there better places we could put that?
It didn't do too bad the last one, the last.
Come up, I suppose, yeah, a little bit.
It did pretty good, really.
Yeah, but. Long time there, didn't make what, fifty dollars a.
Great.
A time.
Very unusual, nothing was, yeah. But yeah, things are changing different today than they were then too, you know. That was anyway, a suggestion that she had, that we should maybe think about, so that. I meant to bring it up last month, forgot.
The uh, the the general account right now is around nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, after that two hundred some thousand, that's all the taxes that came in on Thursday, yeah, we bumped up to like. Don't hold me to like nine hundred and five thousand that we have in there. We could easily, I would think we could easily invest a hundred thousand dollars without. Turpling ourselves, you know, or.
Even worrying about.
Even more than that, I would think.
Wouldn't you think we could too?
We went more than that, then I probably want to ask some questions of, or I could ask Burkhardt and Burkhardt to.
Sure.
Get get some guidance too.
That's a good idea.
Sure, easy.
It's a real good idea. Yeah, you could give him the rate of return and the whole nine yards and he can give us advice about that.
Oh, like a deal.
Yeah.
We need to make a motion then, if John finds a good deal, just to keep pursuing it.
And, yeah, it would, it would take a motion to move money around like that.
Yeah, and I mean, we we do a little more than a hundred, I mean, jeez, I would think we'd be down to do two hundred thousand or.
I I would be perfectly happy or comfortable with two hundred, for sure, you know. I'll make a motion that we, that we allow John to find. Best rate and uh, from the best provider that we can find, I don't want you to go to New York, you know.
I don't want to go to New York.
You know, the local area more.
Yeah, from what I've saw, the smaller. Local banks got better rates than the big banks.
About two hundred thousand dollars.
And again, small towns ought to take care of small town banks.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Tom made that a motion, someone to second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I pose, motion carried. Okay.
Now we're at the Banyan.
So I'd asked for this a while ago and I just actually got it. For when Sue starts, just to kind of help. For a long, um. This would be just an online training for Ben, three two-hour segments on, on all three categories, the fund. They roll in utility. Um, for six hundred dollars, so the, you know, like I said, everything, it's um, so. Like I said before, Banyan has been very, very helpful, um. And they can, you can just have have them sign in and they look at what you're looking at and um. Um, I think for six hundred dollars, just. It's a good, it'll be a good start for her to build a foundation on to go, you know, so. Um, instead of doing a cold turkey like I did.
You need a motion on that or just, it's just something to do?
I don't know, for training, six hundred dollars, I don't know.
Oh, I think we might make a motion or.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was motion carried.
We've been encouraging for months. Education, we've encouraged for months, education, you know, months and months.
So is that something that you can pick up and do anytime during the business update or sign up for it or?
We'll have to schedule dates, so when I talked to her on the phone today, she said, um. Once you have some dates scheduled, so we can coordinate that now. Maybe, maybe towards the latter part of July, I don't know, you know, um, and. And then they, she just has to schedule the people, because there'll be three different individuals that doesn't, that. Um, do it, and I'm assuming it's all those from the help desk and all of them and then. They're, they they know. They're very good.
How about, like, right now, you're you're in the middle of the utility billing, have they been able to help you and get you through that all right?
Yeah, um, so. The piece with the Itron. That was challenging, race called, somebody from Dakota.
It was Brad Timmsper, when we ever get to meeting with them for their, the water meter that they sell, he's the. Water meter expert on it, he used to be certified on the, all the Itron stuff until they. Set her split ways from.
What did you get him bottom? They got a feather and.
We've got that on the agenda later to have presentations, but he he, uh, he sat down on the phone and he tapped in on our. Or you type in, he looks and we had an old manual for my trial, um. And um, that I printed out and um, he got us through to. Create your hours, get out, read them, and then so I could, once we got done, Bert, I transferred it from. The handheld to Banyan, so now the rest part is all gonna be with Banyan. But I was, I was having trouble signing in that second day. And I called the one eight hundred number in that manual and it took me to a. Medical supply company and they were on it, they were trying to sell me a home. I was a little something, it took me like five minutes to get off the phone with her.
What'd you buy? Oh, that's good news.
The Itron is is, yeah, it's, that's, I would say, end of life.
So they're helping you through it this time, so in three more months and Sue is gonna have to go through, through it all again, right, or?
It wasn't Itron that helped, and this is from.
No, I mean, as far as John entering to the computer and all that, but. You said that's one of the areas that they'll be helping, payroll that and uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be very, very introductory, so, because it, I mean, they're only two or six, three of them, so.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, I, and and for me, the most confusing and the most difficult to read is the utility side. Um, the report, getting reports out of there and just. What the system's telling you, you know, it's just. Many tabs, many, you know.
Do you like figuring stuff out on the computer? Thank God. All right. Okay, uh, for information, uh, FY. Two thousand twenty-four budget discussion, we usually do that in one August, right?
Yeah, do we need to set a, like a work session to get started, uh? I don't know how how it's been done in the past, so I'm just kind of looking.
That's usually what we do.
Do you think it would be helpful, say, for the next couple of months, maybe three months, that we have? Two meetings a month? To help Sue out, if she has questions or we have questions, anybody think that'd be beneficial at all or?
There'd be nothing wrong with it.
You know, because.
We can fit them in, you know, personally.
You think that'd be beneficial for you to? Instead of having all this on one night a month to break it up and kind of.
It might be, I mean, it's, it'd be nice to have, that was one of my questions, I wondered when I started. Is there a resource during the day so that when you're not here or something, is there a contact to the council? That if there's an issue, is there somebody that's available?
Yeah.
He told me he was done the end of August.
Well, he'll still be available, just, I got his telephone numbers.
Is that gonna be an option too, because I mean, yeah, the twice a month, I think it'd be great, try to figure things out and figure out how. You know, to prioritize and whatever.
During the winter, it gets kind of slower, you know, but maybe for the next two, three months, you know, maybe until. October, November, maybe you'd, you'd like, prefer to have it twice a month. Over November, maybe you'd you'd like prefer to have it twice a month and uh. There isn't so much at once, you know, and yeah, there's certain questions. I mean, John's called me and. And I'm sure he's called Tom over the last. Two, three months or two months, whatever, and everybody's got through it. Yep, so yeah, there's. We're the people to call. How long will you be able to assist John once Sue comes on board?
Well, kinda what my my plan is, I'll definitely stick to forty eight weeks when when she starts spending, then I'll do this. I'll take that Monday off and then just do Tuesday through Friday that week. I don't know, but. Um, but then I I plan to kinda start phasing it out, you know, um, over time because. With only one computer and. You know, cause on the laptops, there's no, all we have is email on this, so um. You will be following over each other probably at some point, but um. You know, af- after the first week, I think there are times where I can probably bow, let you go on and then, you know. Check in on later or call me or, you know. But then, cause sometime late September, I'll be. Back in the farm business again for the harvest, so whenever that starts, it might be later this year because the funny spring we had, but.
And I guess at this point, never be afraid of calling me, myself, Tom, John, any of us. Just do not be afraid to call us. We will come down and help you figure it out. I'm really good at computers. So I mean, yeah.
If it's, you know, anything on the computer, chances are it's gonna be me. But, you know, the typical, like I was really expecting a lot more calls today. I think the phone rang once today. But some days, you know, get ten, fifteen calls. None of it's actually, no. I haven't had anything yet really that's been dropped. I need to do it right this minute. So and most people have been very understanding, like, you know, I'm filling in, learning. Let me get a phone number, call you back, so.
When will Burkhart be here? That have they gave you a date for their?
That's I wanna check. Is that something we wanna continue and?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, I will, I will call tomorrow and uh. See what we can schedule, cause I'm, I would like to have them look over what I've done too to make sure. I'm on track and I'm not off on something, so.
Yeah, has Greg been very helpful? Or they've been very helpful with you during this transition here?
Yeah, especially at the beginning. I um, my need to get ahold of them has really kinda taped off now. I I haven't had. Uh, I'll, we'll talk to them about CDs um, and then to schedule this, but for the most part, it's just. How to do it in Banyan has been, you know, that's been the biggest question, so.
All right. So as far as that budget discussion, um. I think we always do that, we, well, we can make the date now, but sometime after August meeting would be on uh.
August fourteenth, I think.
Fourteenth, yeah, so. Sometime after the fourteenth, would we do doing that?
Do you wanna do another meeting in August, like the twenty-eighth?
I would think so, wouldn't we?
For the budget, is that getting a little late? Well, if we do two meetings, then the first meeting, we could do a lot of the budget. First meeting, others will have to do bills.
But it's a workshop, so I mean, could we hold a council meeting? And if we got very small things to do. Then have a workshop afterwards.
I think so.
They wanna drive for the August twenty eighth for the second.
And should we just set them for the next couple of months, three months, whatever, two months?
September, then be like the eleventh and twenty-fifth? I won't be here the twenty-fifth, but that's the material. Over would be the ninth and the twenty-third.
I don't know if we need, we can wait.
Yeah.
Over, that's good. Really far out and I believe I won't be able to do two in October, so.
Let's just go the next couple of months and.
Yeah.
Get them scheduled in there.
At least get August scheduled down. I'll make a motion that we have a. A second council meeting, decide a regular council meeting on the fourteenth, on the twenty eighth.
I made that a motion for the month of August. On favor, say aye. All was motion carried. Alrighty, under miscellaneous business, we had generator, talked about that, crack ceiling, talked about that. Asphalt, talked about that. Central coatings, talked about that. Request from Badger Dakota Say Meter Reader Replacement.
It's like with what Ferguson did last month. I think Ashley had been in contact with Badger before, cause he came in, he was trying to find her. And Dakota Supply has gotten a whole race.
Yeah, they they have cam strip meters, so.
They both would like to have um, a sit down with us like we did with Ferguson to discuss their products. I was. But I told Race, I said, I kinda like to do it on a special meeting, then like if we could all meet at six and do one at six o'clock and one at seven o'clock and. When we had all that last month's meeting, that that's just got too long. A full day and then that.
Maybe we, maybe we could do that on the the August twenty eighth meeting?
We're already talking about budget that night, right?
Well, I think we'll probably do budget on the fourteenth. A lot of, a lot of work to do on that, so.
The both those meetings are gonna be kinda budget minded, maybe.
Be two of you working at it though. So, I mean, uh, I don't know, I'm open, I guess.
You wanna do something extra in July, just for them, just a. A special meeting, um.
Let's see what'll work into their scheduling. Can't make a decision.
Then call you up tomorrow.
That Dakota, are they still using an updated Itron one?
No, so they, they branched off from Itron, I think he said, four or five years ago, so now they. They sell cam strip meters and that's the meters that um, I currently have and I've been putting in. Or people have been asking for.
Second meter.
Yeah, and he, the cam strip ones, I don't know what. They still have, if they still have some agreement with Itron, that they can, they have the Itron radios. Like the receiver or the transmitters. So, but obviously if we're not gonna be using the handheld, that doesn't really. Mean much anymore.
Wonder if they could meet like two weeks from tonight?
I was gonna say, the only day I can make is the twenty-sixth, so that's way at the end here, July.
August twenty.
July twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth is the only day I can make.
Everybody be able to make it if we did it at six?
I've known the twenty-fourth. Should be able to.
Well, how about the twenty-fifth, cause then Sue would be on board?
I wouldn't hurt.
And then. We'll check with them and if there's any other changes, we'll have to know that if that date won't work.
What day are we saying? Twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth?
I mean, you know, that one.
Let's try six.
Alrighty, it says update accounts, John, Sue and John, that's something in.
So like with US Bank currently. You're on as a signer, but you have no account access. Tom is on as another. I think it's, I think you're an authorized signer, Tom. But once. So I was thinking. With US Bank specifically is to change. Who was the primary and then me as a secondary and then you continue as a signer, of course. Um, did you wanna? Be okay to move forward on that and then remove Tom unless you wanna stay out, but I.
Would, yeah, but he's acting mayor, should he stay on?
Well, he can be a signer then, like we put him on.
I would put him on as a signer.
And then others, others as we, as I identify them, we'll do the same, that'll be Sue primary and then be secondary. And most of that's just relative to the financial stuff, the financial stuff.
It sounds good.
You, yeah, Burkhart never give you no inkling of when they might be coming, right?
And I haven't talked to him about that specifically at all, so I will, I will call him tomorrow though.
Would that be something and be kinda nice to wait after the twenty-fifth, so Sue's on board, is it?
I'm I'm assuming that they'll probably need that time anyway.
Yeah, I would guess that too, yeah, be in August.
All right. Uh, we got a bid for twenty-five dollars for a gas tank.
Yeah, that's the one behind the shop.
Behind the shop, yeah.
I'd get rid of it.
I think so.
Yeah, just gonna be a.
Yep, so I mean, I make a motion. Okay, then we got a couple of building permits here. Um, one is just replaces.
Need a permit for it, but it's just signed it anyway.
And the other one is a replacement of a deck. Any questions on them? If not, do they make multiple approval, we'd have to have a number on them, you know what?
Yeah, I wrote it down. I think it, and it's a yellow sticky on one of the. Oh, cause I gave you. And there's one more. Right before the meetings, um, Shoemaker.
Oh, okay, that's three of them then. Twenty, twenty-three, seven, twenty, twenty-three, eight, and twenty-three.
Shoemaker? Two will be a charge, but these two will be charged on Shoemaker and. Maybe that. We'll charge it. This one here is. He didn't really have to do it. I mean, it's.
Replacement, right?
John and maybe and Shoemaker will have to pay for the permit, that's. Oh, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, and they're all, uh, we said final, then need to pay for this.
This one here, you say you don't need to have it for.
The no charge.
The no charge, yeah. Yep, I was in there that day.
Any questions on permits, seven, eight, and nine? If not, somebody make a motion to approve. Someone second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Is this, is this the contractor we need to have saying that we're ready?
Robert, Robert has the original.
Uh, hold the food shelf going, John.
There've been six people who stopped in. Last. There are two, three age teenagers. But we have that a lot of donations.
All right, I guess that's about it. Anybody else got anything? And for a large pack of coal, but it's only eight thirty. All in favor, say aye. Thanks, everybody.
Who puts in, but then I forget, who puts in the water meters? Cause we had talked to John about getting a second one. You put those.
I don't install them. I just drop for the secondary. I just.
Second one outside, yeah.
Yeah, I just give that one to you. The primary one.
Are you doing it for like watering?
You gotta make sure it's just on that line.
You can either install it in the house or you can plumb it to fit a hose fitting. You just. When it gets cold, you wanna make sure to bring it inside, cause.
That's just something that we could do. We don't have to, it's, no, we don't have somebody that.
Just take a short piece of hose, go from the faucet to the meter and then there and then.
If you're gonna want the meter in the house, I'm assuming.
You only use it during the summertime, so ours is portable, we just take it in and out.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, piece of hose on to your faucet. Put the meter, then your long hose to water your plants. And then you just gotta take a picture of that.